Ross.
How you doing, Larry?
Good.
Yeah, a few things here, Ross.
You wanna see it?
See what? Important, I guess. Some fun things happening in the brownfield.
... Everybody's utility vote for the month of October.
Gene's all the same in this.
Are you opposed to this?
Yeah.
Are you opposed?
This is your rate, your rate.
Yeah.
The first time I ran, I had five for two, and there was five running for two. Second, seventeen, sixteen, four. Then when I ran for this job, it was, uh...
The monitor and the flash to see if one...
You gotta be on your toes.
I get all the credits for all the stuff we did wrong. I wanna make sure we get credit for the things we did.
Hey, this morning, somebody told us we were amazing.
I left 'cause I had to go over the...
There is coffee back there.
Uncle Janet, so I left.
And I don't know what to do with yourself.
That's right. Hey, that's nice.
I imagine.
It's seven o'clock. You call me to order. Will you everybody but rice or...
Every other year.
Motion, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of the life of John Max Bauer, who served his community as a business leader and a tireless worker for those less fortunate through his work and efforts at the Father Fred Foundation and his church. Be with his family and friends, especially today, as they lay him to rest. Thank you for the many servants of this community and guide them and us as we seek to make this world a better place. Thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will you call a roll, please?
Wish your fleece.
President?
Friend?
Here.
Hooper?
Here.
Inman?
Here.
Max Bauer?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Stepka?
Here.
Willock?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Thomas?
Here. First item of business is to approve minutes of August 25th.
Motion to approve August 25th, September 8th, 9th, and 10th board meeting minutes.
Support? Move in support. All in favor? Aye. Puts the same. And September 8th, 9th, and 10th special board meeting.
That was all part of the...
I grouped them all in here, sorry.
She bunched them up in the motion.
I did them all at once.
You did?
I did.
That was naughty.
We're in a hurry.
Okay, with that, we'll have our first public comment. Read the rules, please.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of Michigan Open Meetings Act amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. One, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. Two, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may at his or discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Hearing that, does anybody wanna speak? Gee, you're the only one who wanted to speak.
Okay.
Next is approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Move in supported. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of additions that were requested, like you to consider. Do you wanna do those after this vote or now?
Why don't you just go ahead and tell us what they are and I'll add them.
What do you wanna do with them?
The first one is just a very brief letter from Health Department on the Public Health and Safety Building, and I'd just like to pass that out and find how you wanna handle that meeting. The second item is, was requested by Commissioner Inman to talk about a semi-annual meeting with local units of government, and I have a handout on that. We usually do two a year, and so he just wants to talk about that for a minute. And then finally, this is the annual meeting of the county, which is required by law, and we've met all the requirements of it, so I just wanted to mention that and pass out a letter from Dean Bott and Bob Cooney indicating that we've met the requirements of it. So those three things, if it's okay.
Um, do you wanna put that under new business?
You can do that.
Okay, you wanna amend your motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I will do that.
And this is the second?
Support.
Support. All right, now, all in favor? Aye. Puts the same, carry it. Okay. Special Order of Business, the public hearing for the Traverse City Place amended brownfield I will call a public hearing to, oh, call it open. You gonna speak to it?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Jean Durenci with the Planning and Development Department. And T, do you wanna introduce yourself?
I'm T. F. Taxiaris. On behalf of Grand Traverse Hotel Properties LLC, the developer of the proposed Indigo Hotel in downtown Traverse City.
The amendment before you is an amendment to the Traverse City Place Brownfield Plan adding one additional parcel to the plan as outlined on Exhibit C of your packet. There's parcels that are outlined in blue, and the parcel that is outlined in red is the additional parcel, bringing the total parcel number to seventeen. The Brownfield Authority has approved this amendment, and the city commission has concurred with this amendment. To allow this amendment will allow the Indigo Hotel to be built on the three parcels, the one in red and the two adjacent blue parcels to that, adding $12 million of private investment, over forty new jobs, and the Brownfield Authority is asking for your approval of this amendment. And T, do you want to come in on development?
Yeah, I can say a few things about the hotel. We were planning to have a PowerPoint presentation, but tonight, but the computer that's normally here locked itself in the, um, there, and we cannot unlock it. So we'll just briefly talk about it. The hotel complex will consist of ninety-seven rooms, and it will have ten residential extended stay units on the fourth floor. It will have a restaurant, an ice cream parlor, lounge at, a rooftop lounge with great views, and exercise facility. It will also have a conference and banquet facility. The building will occupy the entire footprint of the three parcels, and it will occupy hundred percent of the three parcels, real estate parcels that you see on your map. Below the hotel, there will be underground parking for approximately eighty-five vehicles. The complex would be LEED certified, would be silver LEED certified, and as Jean mentioned, we expect forty to fifty-two new jobs, that's full-time equivalents, over the next, for the first year of its operation. Currently, we anticipate starting with construction, which will be the demolition of the existing buildings. Still this year, we expect that if you approve the plan, we'll submit the Act 381 work plan to the state for their approval, and then sometime in mid-November, once we receive the state approvals for the brownfield tax increment financing, then we will start with demolition. If the weather allows, if we have an unusual winter, we will proceed with excavation for the underground parking and the foundations. Otherwise, construction, excavation and construction will start in spring of next year. We're looking at, starting the operation in early spring of 2012. There are some environmental and other challenges on the property. The brownfield plan that you have includes environmental, eligible environmental activities consisting of baseline environmental assessment, supplemental soil and groundwater evaluations. During the excavation of the, for the underground parking, we expect that we will have to dispose of contaminated soils, and also during the excavation for the foundations, we anticipate that the groundwater will be contaminated enough that requires, that will require treatment prior to disposal. Um, excuse me. There are some other activities, eligible brownfield activities, the demolition of the buildings, as I mentioned, removal of below-grade structures, including the automotive hoists that are currently there. We'll have to abate asbestos and lead-based paint in the buildings. The actual excavation for the underground parking is also an eligible activity to be at, requiring approval of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And then, we're also going to, as part of infrastructure improvements, some of the sidewalks and the streets around the building will require some reconstruction and improvements. Finally, the city and the DDA, as part of this, at the same time as this project, will reconstruct Garland Street, or at least the portion of Garland Street that is adjacent to the hotel, and they will also, they're looking at constructing the pedestrian underpass under US 31. The city will undertake those eligible activities, so they are included in the brownfield plan, and we expect that those will be undertaken at the same time as the construction of the hotel, so that at the time the hotel is ready to open, then these improvements will be completed. Again, as Jean mentioned, we have, we expect twelve to fourteen million in investment. The eligible, the TIF eligible expenses are about $343,000 for environmental and $635,000 of MEGA eligible activities. I have in a summary, that's the project, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Did you mention how tall it was gonna be?
It would be four stories.
Four stories, and how many layers deep will that take to cover the eighty-five parking spaces?
One.
Just one layer?
Yes. We are limited by the high water table in that area. The water table is between eight and ten feet below current grade, so the first floor or the, yeah, the floor of the first story would be elevated by about two or three feet above current grade in order to give us enough room for the parking. And also, we're gonna have to go below groundwater level for the foundations, because due to the quality of the soils in that area, we'll have to have spread footings, so that's why the de-watering of the contaminated groundwater.
You mentioned that the hotel itself would sit on three parcels, and I'm assuming those are the three that are contiguous along the parkway, starting at Hall Street and headed east.
Yes. Yes, it says what's now is the Midas and then the two parcels to the east, and the two parcels are already in the brownfield, in the current brownfield plan.
Right, and I understand the addition of the Midas, that's not a question. I just was trying to figure out which three parcels the building was actually going to cover.
Yeah, the three parcels, and then to the east is the street, the city property where the pedestrian underpass will go.
Ross?
I had a question just about the difference in the money. The amendment is obviously an increase in the brownfield total, so there's the $343,000 and change for the environmental stuff, but then, going back to Exhibit A, that's 1.195 million, right?
For MEGA.
For MEGA, yeah.
Yes.
So together, you're increasing somewhere around one and a half million dollars, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the two, the 1.1 for MEGA and 343 for DEQ increase.
And I don't know if you can answer this question, but the city is talking about, in fact, they had a design charrette today for Garland Street, you know, because obviously there are gonna be some improvements to the area, I think largely because of, you know, the hotel coming in. But I think they're talking about special assessment for, you know, for the area, so is, will the hotel be special assessed, or will the brownfield money that's attached to the project be considered their special assessment?
I've not heard about the special assessment on Garland Street. We talked about it really very briefly with the city, actually with the DDA.
Okay.
But to put that on top of the brownfield, I was not sure how that would work or how they would do the special assessment, because I thought the special assessment was for the paving of the streets and the sidewalks.
Correct. Right, oh, no, and I understand that, and, you know, based on what I saw today, they're gonna do a lot of really, you know, good stuff down there, it's just that I did see in here, under Number Three, Infrastructure Activities, that $275,000 is allocated for street repaving on Garland Street.
Exactly.
So does that count as the hotel's contribution, or will there be a special assessment on top of that, I guess is my question.
That would be negotiated with, between the hotel and the city.
Okay.
And the Brownfield Authority.
But there's no provision in here for a special assessment.
No, not at all.
Not for Garland. No, no, I understand, I understand there's no provision in here. That wasn't the question. You don't know how that works as far as if the city does some sort of a split with the property owners, how that would work.
No, I can't answer that.
Okay.
I would guess the amount that they have set aside for Garland Street improvements would be granted into that special assessment district, and that would probably be their competition.
That would probably be our position, but I don't know that, I don't know if that's, how far along that even is, and they have not talked with you in any detail about that.
No, not at all.
So.
Anybody?
Now, I see you go three over, but now there's a little gas station there, is that, is that gonna remain, or is that gonna be Gilbert's, I believe it's called?
Gilbert's will remain. It's not part of the Indigo redevelopment, but it is eligible for redevelopment when they're ready to redevelop, if there's a new developer that comes along.
Okay.
Some of the costs that are in this plan have been set aside specifically for that Gilbert's parcel.
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't seem like it'd be suited to a brand-new hotel with a little gas station.
It doesn't pump gas anymore.
Big trucks go there, though.
Yeah, but it hasn't, they haven't pumped gas there in years.
Well, it's Gilbert's.
Well, hopefully, the, if the hotel is cited there, there will be developers that will be attracted to that, those parcels adjacent, and they'll see something else there shortly. That would be, I think I hope.
That would be the plan.
Also, the pedestrian underpass will provide a bit of a buffer until the other parcels are eventually developed.
I understand that the underpass goes in that real narrow parcel, it's just after the third, just east of your property, then?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's city right away.
Anybody else?
Real quick, does the city planning commission still have to do the site plan review, or they've done that, or?
Yes.
They've done, they've completed that.
Oh, okay, right. Do you wanna close the public hearing for a motion?
I'm gonna ask the public if they wanna.
Right, so public here.
Anybody in the public wanna speak on this issue? Thank you.
Ellen Feivenson, 717 Bloomfield, and my building is where the Inside Out Gallery is housed. I just have a question for Jean, I want a little clarification because of this original plan, and my property was in the original plan. This doesn't affect any of that, the original plan, just for clarification?
No, it does not affect, the original plan remains as-is, and we worked with the previous owners and have set aside specific amounts for their parcel, and that remains intact.
Okay, Tom, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna add that I apologize, I didn't know we had a need for the computer today, but I really wish we could've had it for you to see. Some of you may have been at the Brownfield meeting when they actually showed the renditions of the hotel and pictures of the other Indigo Hotels.
And the city commission meeting as well.
And it's absolutely gonna be gorgeous facility if you approve it, and I think it'll be a great addition to that area.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, and we have a resolution in front of us.
Motion to approve the resolution for approval of the Traverse, for the Traverse City Place amended brownfield plan.
Support? Move in supported. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Puts the same? Motion carries. Come back with your next one, Jean.
I'll introduce myself again, I'm Jean Durenci with the Planning and Development Department. There's a public hearing for the two grants, we're asking the County Board of Commissioners to make application for two grants to the Environmental Protection Agency, one for a $200,000 petroleum assessment grant, and the second, a $200,000 hazardous mitigation grant. Grant Traverse County was successful in receiving a petroleum grant for $200,000 in 2008, and we were successful in implementing that and utilizing the full amount. We have other sites that are in our community, and these assessment grants will be leveraged against private dollars and other grant dollars, and the Brownfield Authority encourages and asks the county board to make the applications on behalf of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. The first public hearing was at the Brownfield Authority this morning at 8:00 a.m., and the recommendation was made to move the applications forward. As indicated in the cover memo, there is no local match on these assessment grants, and the recommendation is to approve.
Okay, I didn't open the public hearing before, but I will now. Does anybody wanna speak to this issue? Hearing none? I'll close the public hearing, and...
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we make, Grant Traverse County make application to the EPA for a petroleum grant in amount of $200,000, and a hazardous mitigation grant in amount of $200,000.
Good point.
Court, wait.
Can I ask?
Discussion.
Jean, you can actually just nod your head to this. I heard this morning, I heard this morning, nod or shake, either one, I heard this morning at the Brownfield meeting that there is some contamination in East Bay Plaza. Is this, are these grants something that could be applied to clean up that area? Maybe you can't just shake or not.
We couldn't hear your head.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The assessment grants can only be used for assessment and not cleanup. We use the petroleum grant that we had to do some assessments, so we know where the plume is and the depth of that plume and what the contamination is, so the first petroleum grant was utilized at East Bay Town, East Bay Plaza to let us know where that plume is and the depth and the width of that plume, so it helps tremendously, but it cannot help clean up. These assessment grants are only for assessments.
But this morning at the Brownfield meeting, the owner's representative and the consultant came in to introduce the fact that they're preparing a brownfield plan for that East Bay Mall and that they may be submitting it sometime in the near future, correct?
Correct. So it, this, the assessment grants prove that it helps to know where the plume is and how they can redevelop it. It helps move the project along and get the private investment into the community.
And we're talking about where Toms and Dunhams and...
Yes.
Any other question? We have a motion? All in favor? Aye. Puts the same? Motion passes. Moving on. Next is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, received and filed or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Receive and file, one, resolution in support of Senate Bill 449 regarding police hours for certification, Benzie and Oceana Counties. Two, resolution opposing a public credium rate for foster care, Midland and Saginaw Counties. Three, area agency and aging minutes of June 3, 2010. Four, Northern Michigan Substance Abuse Services minutes of July 12, 2010. Five, Conservation Resource Alliance minutes of July 15, 2010. Six, Board of Public Works minutes of July 26, 2010. Seven, G5 Subcommittee minutes of August 2, 2010. Eight, Commission on Aging Minutes of August 3, 2010. Nine, Resource Recovery Council minutes of August 5, 2010. Ten, Road Commission minutes of August 11, 2010. Eleven, Sewer and Water Committee minutes of August 12, 2010. Twelve, Conservation Resource Alliance minutes of August 19, 2010. Thirteen, Public Health and Safety Committee draft minutes of September 1, 2010. Fourteen, Resource Management Administration Committee draft minutes of September 8, 2010. Fifteen, Ways and Means Committee draft minutes of September 15, 2010. Referrals, none. Approvals. Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Sixteen, Grant Traverse Sheriff's Office surplus vehicles. Seventeen, Comprehensive Planning, Budgeting, and Contracting Amendment IV. Eighteen, lease agreement, Kingsley Adolescent Health Center. Nineteen, Medical Directive Services Agreement with Benzie-Lilina District Health Department. Twenty, approval for use of State of Michigan E-grants, Health Department. Twenty-one, Grant Traverse Sheriff's Office, approval to purchase antennas for mobile data terminals. Twenty-two, Veterans Affairs Inter County Agreement with Lilina County. Twenty-three, acceptance of grant funding, MSU Extension Water Stewardship Program. Resource Management Administration Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Twenty-four, Agreement with SEEDs for a Local Climate Action Plan. Twenty-five, Boardman River Dam's Project Joint Resolution. Twenty-six, Approval to Postpone Bid Process for Benefits in 2011. Twenty-seven, Grant Application Mental Health Court. Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Twenty-eight, Watershed Center Agreement with Health Department. Twenty-nine, Local 214 Lieutenants and Captains Command Bargaining Unit. Thirty, Northwest Michigan Council of Governments Energy Grant Audit and Implementation. Thirty-one, Grant Traverse Sheriff's Office Approval to Purchase Property With Forfeiture Funds. Thirty-two, Grant Traverse Sheriff's Office Approval of Construction of Storage Building and Thirty-three, Budget Adjustments.
You've heard the consent calendar, is there anybody in the public would like anything removed? How about the board? Ross? Twenty-six. Yeah, I already had it marked.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thirty-two. Thirty-two?
With the exception of twenty-six and thirty-two.
Support. Move in supported. By roll, call, vote? Yeah.
Commissioner Friend?
Yes.
Hooper?
Yes.
Inman?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Stepka?
Yes.
Willock?
Yes, ma'am.
Please?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Thank you. Next is the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You've got ten minutes.
Okay. The first item is a resolution to the Teamsters Local 214 General Bargaining Unit, the union has... The union has voted on the contract and has approved it, and now it's before the county board. This contract corresponds with the other contracts that have been approved with two differences. First of all, this union had a $1,000 cap on prescription co-pays. They were the only unit that had that cap, and that meant that if someone hit the $1,000 mark, the county picked up everything after that. They have agreed to give that up as of the end of this year. And then the other change that's different in this contract is that there is a slight increase, and I'm not finding it right at the moment, there is a slight increase in the second shift premium, which primarily concerns custodial workers. And I apologize, I can't find the number on it.
Second paragraph, oh, first full paragraph on the second page.
Okay.
No, that's not correct.
Nope, it's actually--
No, it's right on the front page of the fourth paragraph.
And it's 45 cents per hour for those shifts who require more than 50% of their time, or more of their time after 10:00 PM. So, those are the two changes outside of the regular changes. And again, I guess I want to reiterate, this contract meets the terms that the county board set in their direction to us, in that these employees will pay a health insurance copay starting in January of 2011. That will be 4% of their wages, 4% of the cost of premium if they successfully join the wellness program, and six if not, in 2012, it will go to six and eight respectively. So, we achieved our goal of having that added to the contracts, and I would recommend approval.
Was there a shift premium prior to this?
There was. And this shift, this is an increase in the shift premium. And I believe it went up 10 cents. 10 cents an hour.
Do we know what that equates to for us?
We figured it would be roughly $1,000.
Okay.
A year.
Okay. So, and just to also for the, so, starting in January, it would be 1.5% increase in salary, but they would also have the health cost sharing, 4% or 6%?
That's correct.
1.75% the next year, and 6% or 8%?
That's correct.
Okay, so, motion to approve the resolution for Teamsters Local 214 General Union?
Suck it. Remove the second, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same? Motion carries.
The next item is the recovery zone facility bonds for Hagerty Insurance, and Jean's going to handle this one. And I hope this doesn't count in my 10 minutes, because I've never had any control over Jean, and I don't anticipate any tonight.
I'm hoping that the memo that I put together explains what the EDC and Hagerty Insurance, we've been working on the recovery zone facility bond issue since we awarded the application to Hagerty with the bond council and their council. And, as you know, the recovery zone facility bonds had three incentives tied to them by the federal government, being that the bonds would be tax exempt, there's no requirements or reporting for prevailing wage, and there's no full faith and credit by the local unit of government. However, in order to realize all three of those incentives, the only way to realize those is with the State of Michigan issuing the bonds. So, we went back to the EDC and asked them to give the allocation, the recovery zone facility bonds that Grant Traverse County has, to the State of Michigan, asking the state to bond basically on behalf of the county for the Hagerty Insurance project. The project will not change, the 15 million would still be incurred, the 15 million of private investment would still occur, the 156 new jobs would still occur, and Hagerty has committed to hire the local company, local construction trades. So, by the efforts that the EDC and this county board has done, instead of just lumping our allocation into the overall State of Michigan pool, we can say, we'd like the State of Michigan to issue the bonds on behalf of Grant Traverse County for the Hagerty Insurance project. And the EDC met in special session, and the resolution is in your packet, and we're asking for your concurrence of the EDC's action to send the resolution down to the State of Michigan to bond on behalf of Hagerty Insurance. Yes?
I actually have a question, probably a little bit side note from the Hagerty Insurance. So, do I understand all of the unused funds, or the unused recovery zone facility bonds, so, State of Michigan enacted legislation to allow them to take 2/3 to be used elsewhere in the state? Does that mean we will have the opportunity to do any more of this? There was another applicant, wasn't there?
There was another applicant, and I've contacted that other applicant and sent in their application to the State of Michigan, asking for them to consider that project on behalf of the county as well. And they would be able to utilize those incentives. So, there'd be enough allocation now to the state that they can do other projects with that unused funds.
When this was brought to us, it was kind of a one or the other, and this project was more ready, right?
Correct.
So, I just make a motion to approve the resolution designating recovery zone facility bond allocation to the Hagerty project through the Michigan Strategic Fund.
Is your support? Support for Wheelock? Discussion, Ross?
And correct me if I'm wrong, Jean, but there's only a rather small percentage of these bonds that have been, you know, that anyone statewide has tried to use?
That's correct.
Like only 4% or 5% of the total allocation?
Less than 4%.
Less than 4%?
Yes. The facility bonds, the private bonds. There's been more for the economic, the public bonds, but not the private.
So, the main reason that we're doing this is transferring it back to the State of Michigan, and it's just to give the project a little more flexibility, correct?
Correct, and be able to utilize all of the tools that is part of that bill from the federal government. Yes.
I think the most important problem with utilizing this, if my memory is correct, these things have to be shovel-ready and ready to go by the end of the year.
That is very true, and--
And no one that's got something, unless they've got really ready to start construction, could possibly be ready for a $15 million project, finance, and have financing lined up and everything else by the end of the year.
Larry?
What was the original allocation?
The original allocation for Grant Traverse County--
Yeah.
For the facility bonds was 8, 8,184,000.
Okay, so that--
We're using all of it.
Okay, and then we don't have any other projects online for this.
The other applicant that wanted to use the facility bonds, they, I put their application into the state to consider, and they're working with that.
To see if they have any lapses.
Well, they're going to have, they're, we're only using 4% or 5%, there's going to be a lot of money that the state has available, and so, if the project is feasible and meets the requirements, they probably have a pretty reasonable chance.
Yes.
So, there's no match or no full faith and credit by the counties, is that correct on these?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Pose the same? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item was an item that was brought to our attention at the budget meeting last week or two weeks ago by Commissioner Richardson, and I apologize, the board, I'm going to pass this letter out, probably in the mix of the whole budget discussion. I had known this but forgot it. Jen Seaman had already directed our administrator to bid, to get, seek other bids for health insurance. So, more than a month ago, we started getting bids for health insurance, and in fact, those other bids are now in, and we are evaluating those bids at this time. And at RMA next month, we will be bringing you the results of those bids and providing you with an opportunity to make a decision.
Dennis, I'm not sure I want to mention this, or if it's worth fact-checking, but you have the subbage business plan on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going back to--
Ross Childs cannot be here till late o'clock, so I was going to ask you if we could hold on that, thank you.
Okay.
Just one other note, I followed up on Commissioner Richardson's comment, and my position is in the process of signing up with Blue Cross Network, so, you know, what you said is true, that they are out.
Well, obviously, this addresses the question I had, which is, I mean, when we signed the contract a year ago, it was really just for a year, and I'm happy to see that the county is, you know, investigating other, you know, carriers and other possible ways to save money.
Yeah, the minute, well, I think, and I apologize for not remembering that in the middle of that whole budget thing, but Jen reminded me right after that about the fact that like, three weeks or four weeks before, that she had asked for that comparison, and asked for rates from Blue Cross at least, and I think we received them, our agent received them about a week or 10 days ago, has had one meeting with Jen, but we will have a recommendation for you with the analysis at RMA in two weeks.
Okay.
Next is the claim summary, and Dean will handle that.
I have passed out the claim summary for the month of September, and this includes all of the check runs that we have processed. Total county claims for the month are 16,142,888.99.
Motion to approve the claims presented.
Support. With the exception of Stepka.
Yeah, the 16,000, 16,142,888.99.
By roll call vote.
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Edman?
Yes.
Max Power?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Stepka?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes ma'am.
Leese?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Stepka on a pre-acclaim of 185262.
Support. Move is supported by roll call vote.
Commissioner Edman?
Yes.
Max Power?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Stepka?
Abstain.
Wheelock?
Yes ma'am.
Leese?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Hooper?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The rest of, then you have in your packet the Human Resources Snapshot, just for information. Item number seven is the Commissioner to Disclosure, Commissioner Wheelock, which is his letter in the packet, which I believe you received at Ways and Means, and that concludes everything I have in this section.
Well, we need an approval of Wheelock's letter. Right?
I don't think so. Do we?
Sure. I would make a motion that we accept the letter from Wheelock welding regarding the new bridge railings he's working with. Support? Remove and supported, discussion? All in favor?
I've been very upfront with this from the beginning, that I was bidding the railings to all five of the contractors that were bidding the bridges.
Right.
Well, basically, what we're doing is we're just--
Accepting.
No, accepting the fact that we have a disclosure statement, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same?
Roll call, please. We got a roll call for--
Oh, that's right, Wheelock, he's here, isn't he?
Mr. Max Power?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Stepka?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Abstain, please.
Leese?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Hooper?
Yes.
Edman?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Here, yes, please.
Hey, can I ask a quick question? Dennis, on this Human Resources Snapshot?
Yes.
Five openings, 159 applicants, year-to-date, 32, 1,051 applicants.
Jen, would you answer that? Is there a mistake?
Makes a difference, I guess.
I'm sure with 3,200--
Job applicant.
What's that?
I say 32,000?
No, 1,051. For 32 applications, 32 openings. Wow, I just--
Yep.
Thought that was interesting.
There are some jobs, we have, in the last year, I'm aware of two jobs where we had over 100 applicants for one job.
We received 166 for the planner in like, less than seven days. That was the most recent. Yeah, I would say that, mhm, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Items that came off the consent calendar. Number 26, page 77.
I took this off the consent calendar because I don't wish to consent to it, so--
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented, postpone the benefit till 2000, that we postpone the agent of record bid till 2011.
And that's, that's the spring of 2011, correct? The first quarter?
Yeah.
First quarter, that was my understanding.
Yep, first quarter.
Is your support?
Yes.
Remove and supportive by Wheelock. Discussion.
Again, with the budgetary issues we're having, I can't see leaving any stone unturned, and if it's possible that we can save money by bidding out the benefits agent, or even doing away with the benefits agent completely, I think we should explore it. I don't think we should wait six months, or eight months, or even one month if we don't need to.
Yeah, if it were in the, I was just going to leave in the consent calendar, because I had my thwack added at Resource Management Administration, and it didn't work, but yeah, I don't agree with it either.
I don't agree with it either.
Well, let's see how many do.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same?
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Richardson?
No.
Stepka?
No.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Leese?
No.
Friend?
No.
Hooper?
Yes.
Edman?
Yes.
Max Power?
No.
Chairman Thomas?
Doesn't matter, no.
No?
Does anybody want to make another motion? Oh, we can't.
On to the next one.
I, we, well, no, I was thinking we could--
Let's be on agenda for the next--
Take a motion to get going on it, if you want.
Well, but isn't that what was supposed to happen anyway? So, we don't need another motion.
That's right.
I mean, the motion was to postpone what was supposed to happen.
We will start preparing the RFP.
Okay.
Who flipped?
Thanks for waking me up.
Oh.
The next item is Sheriff's Office approvals for construction of the storage building. You pull that off?
Yes, I did. I pulled it off because I think the cost for the building use is excessive, and I'll not support the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we support or approve the purchase and building of the sheriff department's bull barn.
Be paid for--
Storage building.
This is not an $800,000 bull barn.
Could be paid for with--
With the seizure money, forfeiture funds.
Forfeiture fund. Got support?
Support.
Discussion?
I think, I think the sheriff is still having second thoughts about whether or not he needs the wash bay, and I think that if that's removed, that's about a $45,000 savings, you know, at least, that's kind of the discussion Bob's here tonight, the sheriff isn't, and, but I believe that's the current status, is they haven't quite confirmed whether or not that's, they're going to do the wash bay, and that saves about $46,000 if they take it out.
Well, do you want to delay this a month until we know? I mean, this, this, this resolution is to approve the building with the wash bay, that's what we were told, the recommendation that was voted on by the committee, and--
It was, it was the, excuse me, it was the contingency fund that the sheriff spoke to, and there's 50, I believe, 50,000 in a contingency, and he's hoping, which I think, if my memory serves me correctly, brought it to like, 832, 832,000.
The contingency was separate from the, they outlined--
No, in the final, in the final, for the property, the building and everything, you're talking about roughly 832,000 takeaway if they didn't use the contingency, 50,000, which contingency, fifty thousand, which puts it like seven eighty-something. And I think that's excessive for what the sheriff originally had came in front of this board and stated they wanted to use the building. And I'm just not sold on the package, that's all.
Oh, you were first, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
I was just gonna, you know, yeah, he voted for it, you know, he's got a good amount of seizure money to use in eighteen months.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna be hard to buy enough antennas and lasers or tasers.
Appreciable items.
Exactly. He's identified this as a need. My personal preference would have been that we use the seizure money for the New World software. And that would have freed up the money that we had in capital, which would have put us in better posture for capital over the next one to two years. But it didn't go that way. And so, be that as it may, he has the seizure money, he's identified this need, and that should be what he spends it on then.
But he can't, he can't use this forfeiture money for software, can he?
He could have.
He could have. I'm not disagreeing with the sheriff as to the need of the building.
I think it's really, and I realize he probably, he doesn't have any control, because I know the sheriff well enough that he's a penny pincher, but that's a lot of money, even if it is ICE money. Well, I think, I think the parcel of property that they selected and where it's at, the industrial park and the type of industrial building they're trying to build, also drives this cost. You know, I believe, for the building they're building, I believe the, the cost is very reasonable, or certainly within reason. The, the type of building that's designed and has been bid is in line with the buildings that are in the industrial park where this is located. Now, you, you can't, I, there's probably, you know, I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing there's deed restrictions in that, in that parcel, that you can't go in there and put up a wood-framed, timber-framed pole barn. I'm pretty sure they won't even allow it in that park, you know. And I, I do believe that for the building that we're asking for, and was specified, that the prices that you got are very good. Now, the price per square foot is, for that type of a building, is pretty much in line.
I would echo Commissioner Friend's comments. This would not have been my first choice, but we do only have eighteen months. I do support the wash area for the vehicles. I strongly support that. We heard the sheriff say that he used to have an arrangement with the city of Traverse City, and that went by the wayside. At the moment, he's got an arrangement with the county road commission. That could go by the wayside. And I don't know about anyone else's vehicles, but my vehicles are affected by the salt on the roads in the wintertime. So I certainly don't want to omit that.
Larry?
I just soon, you know, I'm just gonna give the, on the faith of the sheriff that he's done his due diligence, and, you know, I agree with his recommendation in terms of what he's presented to us to move forward with. And I'd rather have the building we really need in the long term with all these options that he's got in here, rather than trying to skinny the deal down, and then someday later saying, wish we would have added this, and would have made sense to do this, and now it's gonna cost more money, and we don't have forfeiture funds to look at to do it, and it's gonna, you know, so I'd just soon get the job done right at the first time.
Well, my comment in regard to the wash bay is the same as it was a week and a half ago. If you'd want it, you think you might need it, build it now, because you'll never add it to this building.
Right.
You know, and Chris is exactly right. Currently, they have an arrangement with road commission. You know, a couple of years ago, they washed almost all the patrol cars in different fire stations throughout the county, you know. But those stations are getting full now, and they don't have room for them either.
Do we know whether the sheriff is planning on proceeding with the wash bay or not?
I beg your pardon?
Do we know if the sheriff is planning on proceeding with the wash bay or not?
If we've.
As far as you know.
We've received no notification that he wanted to change any of the recommendations.
It's really, I think it's up to him what he thinks he needs in the facility. The resolution that's before us, that would be under the forty-seven-seven for the allowances, right? So, I mean, I don't have a problem making a motion to table it for one month till we know for sure, but this resolution would, would, would let, give him the flexibility.
No, it is, it is not part of the forty-seven-seven, it is part of the six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-one-eighty-one.
He would still have the flexibility whether or not he wanted to add it or not, or take it up, correct?
The sheriff's intent was to have the wash based on what Commissioner Wheelock had said, and the committee voted to include the wash, and I would even agree with having the wash. That's a prudent thing to do. I just didn't agree with the total cost of the building. But by no means did I mean we need to take the wash out, or a door out, or something like that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard Sonny say that the sheriff was thinking that he was.
There was some discussion that he may take it out, but, you know, if Bob's telling us as of now that he's, he's gonna leave it in, then, you know, if we approve it tonight with it in, I'm sure he's gonna be very happy to have a wash bay.
Then there's calls for it.
It's in here.
Anyone else? Maybe we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Stepka?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Could you repeat the motion, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry. Is it motion to deny or to approve the resolution?
To approve.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Forfeiture funds.
All right.
Set? Okay. Commissioner Fleece?
No.
Friend?
Yes.
Hooper?
Yes.
Edman?
Yes.
Maxpower?
Yes.
Richardson?
No.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Next is, we don't have any unfinished business. How about that new business? I didn't have time to write it down, so you don't have to remind us.
First item is just, I talked to Commissioner Wheelock about this, the chairman of the Public Safety Committee. We will be bringing in November the plans for the, for the possible expansion of the Health Services Building. And originally, we wanted to ask you to consider holding the Public Health and Safety, or the RMA, meeting at the Health Services Building, so that you could tour the building along with Dr. Verizer from Northern Dental Clinics. But several commissioners indicated to Fred that they've seen it, and they've toured it in this past year, and there's not, they don't feel there's a need to do that again. So what this is, is just a letter from Fred indicating kind of the summary of the item, and, and asking that individual commissioners, perhaps, who haven't seen the building, could contact Fred and just meet and do a tour individually. And then what we would do is, in November, we would bring to RMA, or, excuse me, to Public Health and Safety, the complete presentation, along with the architect and Dr. Verizer from Northern Dental Clinics. If that, and I just wanted to see if that meets with your approval.
The only comment that I made, you know, when, when I spoke with them earlier, you know, we know that we're going to have three new faces on this board in January. We're not gonna start any construction with this project. We won't, probably won't even get the specifications out for bid until January.
Right.
So I really wonder whether it's worth the time to try to do any sort of a public presentation, or to this board and to the public about this expansion in November or December.
Well, that's.
You know, I hate to delay the project, because I know we need the project, but we're not going to start construction until probably April or May, anyway.
Well, that's likely. Again, my concern was, is that I didn't want to put the board in a position to take the next step in the project, which would commit more funds, without you having enough information to make a decision. And that would include presenting to you the budget, and kind of the, the summary of the cost estimates. If what you're, if what you're suggesting, Commissioner, is that we delay making any decision on putting together bid specs to go out for bid till January, I guess that's a decision of the board.
You know, I'm willing to do it, but obviously, I'm probably still gonna be here, you know, and I don't know how everyone else feels about it, you know. It's, you know, we have ongoing business every year, that rolls over to, to future boards. But, you know, when we're talking about actual construction of a building, you know, and the building assessment and all of that, you know, I, I don't know whether we want to wait. I don't have a problem going ahead with it, you know. I, I think one of the problems when, when you do delay these projects is there, there is a learning curve, and you end up going through it over and over in order to get everyone up to speed, so.
If the board, if the board feels that they would like to wait for the new commission to be elected, that is certainly your prerogative. I guess my, what I would ask you to consider as you make that decision is the fact that what we're really hoping to do here is if you decide to move it forward, get the design specs done and the bids done this winter, when we think there's still gonna be a really competitive bid market, so that we get bids that are very competitive. Spring, spring may not bring us the same level of competition once, you know, construction season starts, so that would be the only thing I would ask you to consider.
It's obviously our responsibility. We are all serving until the end of this year, and I, I don't see any reason to wait. I think we should keep moving the thing forward.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, when we were waiting to, after elected and waiting to serve on the board, I didn't expect any decisions to wait. And, you know, we could say that, we could echo that same sentiment for many, many, many decisions.
That's fine. And I just, you know, when, when Fred called and asked me, I said, you know, the only thing that I can tell you is there will be three, at least three new faces on the board January first. So even if we go out for bids, we don't, you know, those people that are going to make the decision to approve the bids are gonna be different people than approved to go out for bids.
And even with the same board members, sometimes you get a different vote.
We got a vote tonight that we got the first time.
You had your hand up a long time ago.
I don't believe that we should wait at all. As far as the new board members, if we waited, they're coming in, they don't have a clue. And it would take them a while to get up to speed. We delay it again. I'm for moving forward, and I think probably the incoming commissioners would understand that, and when it gets to the end of their term, they would do the same thing, because I think, like Beth said, we could delay stuff one after another. And we were elected to make decisions and do things now, and I think we need to proceed because Fred needs to get this done.
I did say that.
And I agree with Dennis on the bids.
I did say that, but I didn't say the incoming commissioners are clueless, that when you said.
Pardon?
So is it fair, fair for me to assume that we can go ahead with that plan, and we'll bring this to you in November? And any commissioner who wants to tour the building will contact Fred, and he'll make arrangements?
I, I just can't help myself, but, but say that governmental bodies generally do not move with lightning speeds, so we probably should keep going.
All right. Well, that's true.
This next issue is an issue about our semi-annual meeting with the local municipalities. Commissioner Edman added that perhaps we have a meeting, and we've got a tentative date of November fourth, nine to twelve, nine AM to twelve. And he suggested that the, that the basis of this meeting be the discussion surrounding the changes in our Resource Recovery Program, recycling program. I want to add that, I think I sent it to all of you, Glenn Lyle from the Township Association just sent a recent memo around that their next township meeting, Bob Osterhout will be there to talk about this issue with the townships, and I wanted to let you know in case you wanted to attend that as well. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Commissioner?
No, other than we typically meet in the latter part of the year with the townships, the city, the villages, and we ask them for agenda items that they feel they'd like to bring forward as a joint discussion. And then we also generally survey the county commissioners to see what items they think would be appropriate for that meeting. I just threw against, I just threw some ideas against really the wall in terms of, you know, the status of the inter-local agreement going towards the end of the year, and how the townships are coming in terms of bidding out solid waste services if they're moving in that direction, status of the septic treatment plant and the business plan, you know, making sure everybody understands we've got a contingent plan for recyclables at the American Waste Site, with the removal of the bins at the end of the year. I mean, there could probably be other things that everyone else could think of, but typically, we get together and have a roundtable discussion and informational session. I'd be in favor of doing it. I don't know if everyone wants to give some thought to maybe some other ideas. Anybody want to throw it out? Well, we heard from Commissioner Fleece.
I'm in agreement with the meeting on November fourth, and in general, the topics, I think we could probably maybe refine the topics in the near future here. But by looking at the alternative date, I can tell that Commissioner Edman hasn't donated any money to the DNR for deer licenses. And I'm sure there are gonna be a lot of people missing.
How did I miss that?
It's hunting day.
So that's opening day of deer season, and I think between the townships and everybody else, you'd have some people missing. November fourth would be better, right? Yeah, November fourth is the date.
Let me suggest that if that, if that date works for you, perhaps if you have any other topics that you'd like discussed at that meeting, you could get those to Katie in the next week, let's say, and then we can kind of move things forward and get notice out to everybody.
So just consensus that we'll just have that November?
Is that okay, November fourth, we'll plan on it?
Just real quick comment, these seem fine, although you might want to reassess it after that MTA meeting, because it might kind of preempt some of that. And the other thing is, you might also talk to John Syke about the redoing the county master plan, because he's really integrating, obviously, the townships and.
That's a good point.
A lot of involvement in that, so that might be a relevant topic to have.
All right.
Just, on, and I know this was, I'm sure included in your thoughts, Commissioner Edman, but on number three, status of townships bidding for solid waste services, you might want to add the city.
Okay. Yeah. They're jointly doing with AGME, I know.
The last item Dean's gonna talk about quickly.
Your board rule, section two-point-three, require an annual meeting, and this meeting tonight is the annual meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And the meeting is supposed to be held between September fourteenth and October sixteenth, and it can be held concurrently with a regular meeting, so that's why we're, I guess, commenting on this tonight. Dennis had asked me to look at what the requirements were. Bob did not have a chance to review what I'm handing out, so I'm fully responsible for the contents of this memo, or this item that's going around. But I did talk to Bob yesterday afternoon, and we agreed on the applicable sections and the Michigan compiled laws that we had to comply with, and I'm trying to address those requirements. Part of your board rule indicates that at this meeting, at your annual meeting, the board shall take the report of the finance committee. And so we were then looking at the appropriate section in the statutes that defined what those reports were. And the primary or principal requirements are concerning staffing levels, and whether or not, and I've taken it or written it here word for word. And then the other is in regards to a detailed estimate of expenditures and revenues for your ensuing fiscal year. And I really feel that the intent of the statutes have been met with the information that we provided, you know, as part of the budget document. And I'm not trying to shirk any responsibility here. If there are specific things that you would like reported, would be more than happy to do that going forward, or we could still continue or try to provide that. So that is one of the reasons why I'm asking for discussion here. We weren't really sure what we should report, but the statute lists a number of things, and they're primarily in regards to staffing, whether or not you would increase or decrease staffing in the various departments, or whether you would consolidate. So I'm, I'm kind of paraphrasing here a little bit, but the other requirement was basically a budget for your next fiscal year. So I really do feel we've satisfied the intent of those requirements with the budget document.
This is a very old law that was put in place years ago, and I think what it really defines is the budget process that we do over a period of months, but it's required to have this annual meeting. So I think we go, we have gone into considerably more detail through the budget process and probably addressed all of these issues. I'm sure we have. But in order to meet the letter of the law, we wanted to call this the annual meeting meeting and, and, you know, give you a chance to think back to the things that we've worked on and for you, and the information you've discussed.
I think, I think we, Bob will recall, we had this discussion when we were dealing with the board rules, that, you know, this, this designated date, we've got, we've got another date that has to be done the first Tuesday after such and such a date.
Equalization.
It's the equalization meeting. We're gonna have to hold a special board meeting to, to comply with, with a law that was written in the 30s, because that's not the way we do things, you know, but, you know, I, I think we had a lot of discussion about whether or not there was any reason to have an organizational, or a official annual meeting, but, you know, it was a statutory requirement, so that's why it was left in the board rules.
I, I do wanna add that Linda Covert, the county clerk, did post this meeting. She prepares a, and she can address this better than I can, but the annual, the schedule of meetings for the year did indicate that this meeting was your annual meeting, so I was happy to find out that we had, had done that also.
So, I think in our, in summary, we think we've met all the requirements of the law. If there's anything specific that commissioners wanna see next year in terms of what you'd like to see on the night of the annual meeting, we'll modify the, you know, our processes to make sure we do that. Okay?
That's all.
Your, your, well, while we're waiting for Ross, we have our second public comment. Anybody wanna speak?
Mr. Chairman, in terms of the information from Mr. Childs, based on the, I just talked to Glenn Lyle for a minute, based on the information that he provided to the Board of Public Works on Monday, his intention, I think, tonight was to merely come and make sure you all had a copy of the report, which I think you all now have a copy of the report, to indicate you, to you that it's draft, it's a draft business plan at his, at this point in time. I know Monday, he asked all of the Public Works members and Sewer and Water members to please forward to him any comments they had on the report that he would like to see modified, and I believe that was his intent of what he was gonna do with you tonight as well.
Yep.
And so, I, I don't know that it warrants waiting for him to come, because I think that was what he intended to do.
Correct.
I would be happy to have him come back in a few weeks to talk with you in detail about it, once you had a chance to get your comments back to him, and for him to prepare a final report, or I could just ask him to come to RMA and have a, a discussion before you give your comments to him, if that's useful.
Well, is he gonna show up?
Well, he was supposed to be here at 8:00, I'm, I'm assuming he's been delayed.
And we can move forward, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would just move that we received the, the draft business plan that was provided. Each one of us will take opportunity to review it and forward all comments to Ross Childs at the DPW by the Thursday, October 21st deadline is outlined in the letter.
Support. Can you move support and discussion?
I do have a quick question. Liz might be able to answer this, or Glenn might be able to answer, or Dennis. When I looked through the septic treatment plan presented, the draft one, I guess what I was surprised to find was, it's still, it's not a decision on how to move forward, it's still chock full of options, and I'm wondering, you know, it looks, says here that it'll be reviewed October 21st. Is the intent on October 21st, or by October 21st, to actually choose, make a decision and choose a path, and decide on an option? Is that the intent?
I can only tell you that in my discussions with Ross, he indicated to me that he would be recommending, and, and trying to seek the board to take action on a direction. He did not.
This board or the Board of Public Works?
Board of Public Works. He did not indicate which one it would be, or anything like that, but he did tell me he was going to be recommending a path.
It seemed to me Sew and Water would be the board to make the decision.
Sorry, what?
Sew and Water would be the board to initiate the decision.
Because a little bit, what I had envisioned by the time we got this report by September 30th, was that, that actually would preempt the, the report or the plan. They would make a decision on which avenue to go, and then the plan would be based on that decision on how it affects revenues and how it affects expenditures.
That was my, that was what I thought was gonna happen too, but obviously, that's not what happened.
Okay.
I did got a public comment today at home, and I didn't, when I went through that, and I forgot to bring it tonight while I walked out and forgot it, but I didn't see anything in there about holding tank rates.
Well, the recommendation is to hold those now.
Yeah, they're, they're in there.
Well, they, they're gonna have to, but, because, you know, that's one of the comments I got this afternoon, is I'm gonna have to leave my house if I have to pay anymore.
Well, that's a comment you can bring back home.
Yeah, I told him.
That's a comment we've heard.
Use less water.
First talked about raising the assessment of holding tanks.
Anyway, okay.
Eight months ago. Calendar. Whatever we got.
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
We didn't vote for it. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Both the same? Carry. Uh, notices, get your calendars out.
We're good.
Oh, I don't. Any, any problems?
I may be gone the last week of October out to Iowa. I'm not sure yet, but I may be gone.
Look for my boat, that's where it went.
Oh, did it?
Yeah. Yep, guy hauled it all the way from here to Iowa. The only time they see water out there is when they have a flood.
Maybe you're the one responsible for all the water they've had out there. We sold them that boat.
Probably. Okay, anybody else?
I have an announcement.
Okay.
At our last Parks and Rec Board meeting on the 23rd, the Parks Board voted unanimously to begin a memorial tree program, and it was through the very generous donation of Russ Clark's time, he drew up a beautiful plan for the civic center, just the civic center, identifying trees that will flourish on the property. We are losing five to 10 trees every year on that property, and we are not replacing them. So, this is a wonderful program, and if you want to plant a tree in memory of a loved one, if you wanna celebrate the arrival of, of a new family member, if you wanna commemorate an anniversary, Grand Traverse County Parks now has a memorial tree program.
Good, Sonny?
I did participate a week and a half ago in the wall raising for the Habitat for Humanity House on South Airport Road, just west of the Sam's entrance. A lot of discussion about the partnership with the Northwestern Michigan College and their construction industry, and DTE Energy, as this is a LEED certified home. I was a little disappointed, and they didn't talk about the partnership with Grand Traverse County, in that the property that that house sits on was made available to them by the Grand Traverse County Land Bank. We took that piece of property when it came back on tax sale, we held it off to sale. We've actually held that piece of property for nearly three years, nearly four years, I believe, and they finally have started construction on that piece of property. And, you know, I, I'm very supportive of, of the Habitat for Humanity and the affordable housing, and that's why I sit on the land bank on your behalf and am pushing for the Housing Trust Fund, to help us leverage monies for affordable housing in this community. And I'm sure that the discussion will be had with Habitat, that they need to recognize the participation and the partnership with Grand Traverse County in providing those properties.
Then you'll be happy to know at the Collaborative when the COG made a presentation on affordable housing, they mentioned the land bank many times.
I have a question for Dennis. Dennis, please refresh my memory. We put out a, a request for bids for custodial services?
Yes.
For our buildings?
Yes.
When are we going to receive information on that?
At the, at the RMA meeting.
RMA, okay, thank you.
We received the bids yesterday was the deadline for the bids, but I have not talked with Danny, so I don't know what the results of those were.
Okay.
Anything else, yeah?
Yeah, one more thing. I had, the board had asked me to have the, an RFQ done for the budgeting for outcomes program done in September. I did not get it completed based on, you know, just the amount of work that we had with the budget, it was more than what we anticipated, but I do have the basics of what I, what I'm recommending we put in an RFQ, RFP for you, and what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is just pass it out to you tonight. I'd like you to look it over. If you have any comments on it, or any suggested changes, please let me know. This would be the basis of the scope of work that we would use in going out to look for a consultant to do budgeting for outcomes. I also want to point out that I'll be gone a couple days next week, and, and I'll be out visiting my brother, actually, in Colorado, and I've made arrangements to meet with the county manager in Laramo County, Colorado, who has instituted budgeting for outcomes. I'm gonna be meeting with him and his staff, and his finance people, and his commissioners, and I'm also gonna be meeting with the city of Boulder, who has also implemented budgeting for outcomes, and I'm gonna be talking to them about the process, so I should have a good deal more information when I come back, and they've used two different consultants, so it'll give me an idea to get, some idea of how they felt about their consultants.
Did you get an health license?
Pardon?
Did you get an health license?
No.
Um, any need to go into closed sessions?
No.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. So moved. Goodnight, Dicky.
Did everybody get one of those?
I believe so.
Okay.
Is that short enough? All right.
On your doing.